Before four years and the people before that, four years.
Four. Let's call the order. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Roll call, please.
Chairman Christensen.
Present.
Vice Chair Greenan.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Member Thompson.
Present.
Member Warner.
Present.
All present.
Thanks, Allison. Public comment.
I'm John Popa. This should be real brief. I see budget isn't on your agenda or anything, and I don't think we're going to be spending any of that money that we planned to for the walkway. But I think there's something you could do yet this year fairly quick. And one is the seals on the pistons. You've got money in the budget. When we set up that ten- or twenty-year plan, remember Steve Seals was one of them? And we've got letters on file that say that those seals were only guaranteed for five years since it's been nineteen, I think, for that. And you totally have to go out for biz except for the neighbor to install it. When Jerry and I got it, that vendor that makes those pistons, you could order them tomorrow because they're the only ones that can make it. They make those pistons. You could order a piston, have it completed within so many weeks, get a new piston there, then hire somebody to take another piston out, put a brand-new one in, take that one out, send it back to the vendor, put new seals in it, and then have it come back and replace that other piston. And I think you could do that all in the next four months. Then you'd have that one spare piston, and if you take your time, I don't think I would overhaul that spare one because the seals are only good for so long. So my suggestion is that you hold that vendor and have them build a new piston. You don't have to get any. It's within your budget. And when you get a pole back, if I have to go to the board, then it's going to be over the deficit. But I got all that information. You probably remember it. And you got from now until Christmas, spend that little bit of money. You know, it wasn't a lot. The seals aren't that expensive. I think the kits were policy blocks or something. A piston is not that much more. That's my story. I'm sticking to it.
Thanks, John. Okay. Can we, in a special session, put one item first over another? I know we can't add items in a special session.
I think you could amend the agenda to...
Jockey the agenda like... I'd like to do, if people are in agreement, do the sensor calibration status report first. Rick can do that, and then John's here to kidnits. I know John's got to leave, but if we could move that to... As the first item, then I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda if it was adjusted.
Also move.
Second. Chairman, you're putting that first above the review of legal opinion?
Affirmative.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Everybody has one. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
We have an agenda. All right, let's go with the sensor calibration status report.
May I run through this quickly?
Please.
I broke this down into the three different locations very simply. The Narrows, because that is, I believe, calibrated and under control. Cal, John, and I installed a staff gauge. We used the prior survey to set the staff gauge at the proper elevation. The water was calm. There was no noticeable flow. Obviously, there had to be some flow because the water's moving towards the North Lake and to the dam. The electronic gauge reading and the staff gauge reading were absolutely in agreement as close as we could tell, looking at the meniscus down at the water level. Cal also cleaned and inspected the control box, and he is installing new electronics in each of the boxes. So at this point, the sensor calibration is complete on the Narrows gauge.
Excellent.
South Lake, Birch Point, ONAN did their survey. John and I met with them. It was a lengthy process, but we did get a good survey. The top of the steel post that is there in the water is four tenths of a foot above the water level at that time. The vertical uncertainty is plus or minus five hundredths of a foot. And that's using the NGVD-29 measurement. On August 14th, John and I inspected the underwater sensor there. There was questionable whether it was reading correctly. We pulled the sensor out of the tube. There was debris, roots, muck in the tube for some reason. And there was driftwood, not driftwood, there was submerged, looked like a piece of plywood, over the top of the whole thing. So we cleaned that out, cleaned the sensor itself, pulled it back into the tube about six and a half or seven inches, and cleaned up the control box. The intent right now is that Cal and John and I will meet later this month to install the staff gauge. We mounted wood on the steel post, so we have the option to attach the staff gauge. And Jerry provided the staff gauge. So Ken Blackstone has been very cooperative. He's aware of what we're doing. He had electricity down at the dock, which is a little scary because he's got extension cords going out around the area, and he's pumping water somewhere, but no issue with that. So later this month, it could slip into September, but our intent is to go back. And Jerry will put a new electronic system in that box as well.
Cal?
I'm sorry. Yeah, Cal. The Leeland Dam, the intent right now is that Cal and John and I will go back and recalibrate that, but after we do, maybe at the same time we do Birch Point. Would like to get it done before September if we can. John and I made a measurement up there on a calm day. We checked the staff gauge on the south side of the dam and compared that to the electronic gauge. As close as we could tell, they were reading the same level. So the indication is that the electronic gauge is working fine, but Cal will put new electronics in that box. The solar collector is a little shaky. Checked it yesterday. It's reading green. It's got enough power. John, do you remember if he put a new battery in the electronics at the dam?
I don't think he did. I don't think he's done anything near it.
Okay.
But I can...
Okay. Well, sir, we'll try to finish that up late this month.
Excellent.
I think he has to update that. There was one there also.
Okay.
Interesting. Yeah, the... It'll be interesting to see what Cal says when he's there. I know I went to the dam this morning and read, and we're on the staff gauge on the wall, we're maybe a quarter inch under the top of the court order, maybe a half. We're running pretty high there according to court order. And when I got back, I pulled up the chart, you know, from the sensors.
Yeah.
And the sensor that's reading the dam is tucked just a little bit below the sensor that's reading the Narrows. And now that we have high confidence in the Narrows and physically looked at the staff gauge on the bridge, the staff, compared to the staff gauge at the dam this morning, there was an inch and a half approximate difference. One of the Narrows is a little lower, and the one at the dam is a little higher reading, you know? And that's the one on the bridge. Did you guys compare the staff gauge at the bridge and the staff gauge on the post when you were at the Narrows?
Not this last time.
That's something we should probably do, you know? I mean, while you're out doing those things, compare the staff gauge reading under the bridge with the staff gauge reading at the sensor, at the Narrows, just to see. But, yeah.
Good point.
Just kind of, being that we have two staff gauges there, I'd like them to be reading real close. Real similar. I know Cal's going to talk theoretically about the difference between the two because there's water flow. But, you know, it's, it would be in thousands of an inch or something. Theoretically, it would be, you know, there, but I mean, it's, it's something that we're going to have a hard time measuring. We're talking, you know, we're doing two inches over the whole lake, you know? And we're measuring at the dam, and we're checking at the Narrows. Now that our checks are good, I'm liking that. Once we get Cal in all three locations and have a higher confidence level in our sensors, I think that's going to really help us making decisions, especially as to how much water do we carry in the system, anyway. I appreciate that update. Questions for Rick?
I guess you were kind of curious sounding when you said there was a piece of plywood or something over the...
Sunken wood. Hard to tell. The whole, at the south end of the lake, there are pillars still in existence and docks that are submerged. What the material is, it's hard to tell. You can break some of it, but it was over the top of the sensor itself, of the...
Attached over the top. But nothing you basically know?
No. I would assume there's some wave action. The sensor is... What's the depth? Probably four feet?
Yeah.
Three and a half, four feet?
You can stand up and reach down. But that's such a trashy area, you know, old docks and old posts and sawmill stuff. And a wave or even a ball of ice could have moved in there. But it wasn't touching the sensor. It was just laying on the bike. But there was junk inside it.
Yeah, it's interesting.
We're going to have to decide who's on there.
I know that, yeah, and from, I'm glad the survey happened down there. I like the tolerance that ONANs are able to achieve. That's pretty good with GPS type. I say GPS. It's much more sophisticated than that. But, you know, plus or minus five hundredths of a foot, you know, we're talking plus or minus a half inch. So, you know, to have it be that close is darn good. That being said, you know, our confidence, plus or minus this much, when we're talking about measuring this much, is, you know, I mean...
Significant.
We're only going to be able to get as close as we can get and do as good as we can do. And I really appreciate the work that's going on. The day that ONAN surveyed, I did some rough calculations. You know, you can pull up that chart and, you know, play with it yourself, but I put, you know, where would the red line be if I did these rough calculations? And the red line would be right at the top of the court order on that day using the survey calcs. So that kind of felt right, you know? We got the water down there, and we're trying to get the water over here, so it's going to be flowing downhill. So that, you know, I felt pretty good about that. So it'll be good to see that red line back where it's supposed to.
We had to set a goal. I'd like to get that sensor out of that guy's private property. We don't have an easement for it. It's kind of nice. And my choice would be to move it over to the pines where that crit comes over. There are dozen trees there, and we can put at it better. Put a jam up with sticks, must rats, jump, crack. That's the best place to put it. That doesn't have any wave action. Sorry.
It's a, it's a good topic, a discussion for us as we move forward. Having that placement on a private piece of property is interesting. We did, I think John provided a format from another one of Cal's locations that is using a DNR site. And so it was like a formal legal agreement with the DNR to allow that to be there. And there are two DNR sites on South Lake, kind of right across from each other. So, you know, whether or not we move the sensor, that's a question. We've got quite a bit of data that can be adjusted once Cal does his adjustment. All the data can be adjusted. So we have a, kind of a baseline of data from that point with the sensor. So moving the sensor would be, I think, a decision where we would be abandoning a set-location continuity thing, but not that we couldn't do it. But, you know, it's a discussion point, I think.
One question. As Cal was replacing the electronics, I didn't get a clear answer on who pays for the electronics updates.
We've been doing that. The county's been doing that.
Okay, is there an order of magnitude on what the electronics cost?
I don't know if we've spent a thousand dollars total.
Very small?
No.
Very small. He does a lot of that in his garage. That little box, he makes that himself, so he followed that. The way the tractor comes off, puts it in. But he paid for that originally. We pay him a couple of dollars a year for this, so it's incorporated in.
Well, yeah, his labor, in essence, is covered with the $2,000. We paid two, twice, $1,000 and $1,000 for, and he keeps up all the software, which he's rewritten like three times. And he's done a lot for that money, I'd say. And then physically actually puts stuff in these boxes. So I think we get a lot of bang for our buck. The hardware this time is going to be a little more pricey, I know, because I remember from the tech committee meeting, I don't remember the dollar figure, but, you know, we're going to spend a few hundred per box to get this new hardware in there because it's not real cheap. But I think it's giving us very, very good data, and as we improve our system, it's going to give us better data. His point was if you have a staff gauge right next to the sensor, then maybe three, four times a year, you read the staff gauge and put a dot next to the color line, and the dot should be on the color line. The sensor should be reading what the staff gauge says. So that's the check they do at length. You have two sensors, two staff gauges there, and I'm happy to see that we're heading that direction. So, anyway, if there are no more questions with sensor calibrations, we can move on. And just in general, we've got two reviews of, there's a legal opinion, there's an insurance statement, and then the third item is dam management, establishment of dam adjustment procedures, process to address concerns, and then walkway status, RFP, roof leak, potential action, conduit, computer box leak, computer repair, adjustment parameters, and current lake levels of the dam and lake level of Narrows. So it's obviously more than we're going to be able to do in a relatively meeting timeframe. It's a very large agenda. I just wanted to say that. And as we work through it, we can pick and choose, and, you know, we meet in one month. So maybe some of the stuff we can breeze over and make sure we get back to in one month, and some of it we can actually take care of. So let's just see what we can do. Legal opinions, number one up. I open them up for comments.
Mr. Chairman, I guess, just to outline my understanding of the legal review, is that we are not obligated to make the improvements necessary to the walkway and make it very reassessable because it's not open to the public. It's open to staff and those individuals that are permitted to use it by the easements granted. I guess in a very brief summary, that's the way I understand the legal opinion.
That was my take, too. We're kind of off the hook on the ADA because it's not public, which is good, in my opinion. And it's interesting to see that its conclusion, but may not interfere with the use of the footbridge by the easement owners, invitees, and licensees. So whoever the lodge invites and whoever the cove invites...
Or licensees.
Or licensees, and the owners themselves, all of those people have rights to use it. And I was just thinking some signage, authorized personnel only, period, would cover that bays legally. I'm just kind of thinking aloud.
Was that the recommendation? Didn't he give us, didn't they give us a recommendation?
I believe that, not so much under legal, but under the NMRNA, which is the county risk management company, they gave me a recommendation that we consider signage that will stay.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a bunch of stuff in that one that I find very interesting. But, anyway.
Would it make sense...
Let's stick to the legal side, and then we get to the insurance.
Would it make sense to contact the co-owners and the falling water lodge owners once we decide on what the verbiage is for a sign?
Oh, I think that's perfect, yeah.
Okay.
Let them know what we're doing and why. We're covering our bays legally, and this is what it means.
For them and their guests and their licensees and...
Yeah, the legal, owners, invitees, and licensees. Ah, yeah. Yeah. I agree.
And the invitees don't have to be invited in writing. They can be a general category of all restaurant personnel and customers. You know, they, it's wide open.
You know, I, we're not going to have someone there quizzing people.
We can't control that.
And it's, I don't, I don't see any way to control them. Anything else on the legal tape? I think that pretty much covers it. Once we get through the insurance side, we'll be able to formalize that wording on signage. Okay, it's Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, Terrence. Terrence Van Doren.
Van Doren.
Terry, yeah. Senior Risk Control Consultant. Okay. Yeah, and he focuses on the hotel guests, and the recommendations, if it was just the hotel guests, are there. And it's not just the hotel guests. So using a key card...
It's not going to happen.
To get across the walkway, I think is not going to happen. I'm kind of clicking down through them. It's not public, so we're past that. Yeah, the structural part, we've been having Spicer do all that work for us. And the maximum weight, I think that's pretty straightforward. You know, that's what we've been doing on the authority, is just call Spicer and have them do it, kind of thing.
So you have had them do it before?
We've, I've had Spicer do all of our work over the last six, eight years. Thomas Proho is the engineer that we had do all the work, and he's living in France now. So it's kind of out of the, out of the picture, so...
So we have a maximum weight?
We do not, no. But, but we need to do that. I think that's, that's something that we need to do. I agree. And... What I can do... I can call for a quote. So by next meeting, I'll have a dollar figure that would be needed to get that type of an assessment done. And that will, I think the dollar figure will lead us to, either we can do it in, you know, with, you know, do we need to go out to bids or not, I guess is the question? Or do we just waive bid? That's an option. I don't know. We've had Spicer do all our work. I don't, I would, I would vote against going out to bid. I'd vote to, let's waive bid and have Spicer do it because they've been doing all our work. But we'll get a dollar figure and then decide on the next meeting as to what we do with that. Does that make sense? Or should we go a different direction?
Yep.
I'll put a two boos. All righty. Now, this one is interesting. Install at least a six-foot barrier to prevent the potential for falling through the openings that exist in the walkway at this time. I was there this morning. I took some pictures. It's cold. It's up to cold. I mean, there's, I don't know. I don't know what he's saying, to be perfectly honest. I'm dumbfounded.
I don't know. I understand that. I understand that he's in a huge...
I mean, whether it's, it's code, I mean, is it, it's, it looks to me like code at the time of this put-in was four inch. And I think it's three inch now. Yeah. So there's a four inch between the bottom rail and the walkway, and then there's a four inch between all the styles. But we can pass that over. Now, he says, "Falling through the openings that exist in the walkway at this time." Deb, you were there, what was he pointing at? What was he? And the whole thing is code. I mean, everywhere you look, it's a four-inch opening opening.
Jerry, I'm a little there, so I'm not sure what specifically that he's referencing. That would have to probably be a fault, it won't be a fault of the cove or whichever you would like, I'm more than happy to reach out and specifically ask about that.
Yeah, that...
I don't think, I don't think there was anything mentioned very specifically when we were on the bridge with him, so.
Okay, well, maybe.
I thought he was talking about, oh, so that all the risk space, you know, six foot would be all there. That's, that's what I was thinking, but...
The metal posts are a head entrapment for young children as well as the bottom of the barrier that has a gap opening. Metal posts. I think we'll have to, I think we need clarification on that because maybe what we'll do is have him come to our next meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I don't understand the six-foot height in there. There's railings all over the place in, in national parks that I've seen that are not, not six foot. Forty, forty-two inches typically. Yeah. And we can get a legal opinion, but as far as I'm concerned, let's go code. Having Terry say six feet isn't code. It's, I don't know where that's coming from exactly. He wants to be safe. He doesn't want us to be sued. If we get sued, they represent us. And they're out money. So, I mean, he doesn't want us to get sued. I think is where this is coming from, but I, I don't know. Maybe we can have him come and chat with us a little bit. I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking that might make sense.
Well, let's say, let's have me able to zoom.
Or Zoom, yeah.
Obviously, your conversation still doesn't seem like it can answer our questions.
Get some more information, maybe? I don't know.
So Steve, you and I were on, working together.
Yeah, you and I. That's a Deb and me, okay. All right. And then the next piece is what we are doing, if we can ever get to it, is to replace those boards. The lights, that's kind of interesting. I was there this morning, I was looking at them. Yeah, I was looking for that. It's, the string of lights, it's like, they obviously ordered it from somewhere and it came out of a box. And there's a bulb. And maybe he's referring to the bulb.
I can tell you specifically, when you're walking from the cove, where they have the lights plugged in, where you're nearby the cove, there's a junction box on one of the posts that when you're coming from the cove, going over the footbridge over to the waters. And that area is probably about three and a half to four foot high, just about little fingers high. Several of those light, the sections in between the lights, some of that has, whatever's on it, the coating, the plastic, whatever, the rubber is off of it. And so there are exposed, like exposed wires, power wires on that. That's not anything, I think that the dam put up, I think it was lights that were put up by the cove. And so I understand it, but I don't know, Jerry, you had a conversation with them? You did tape that? Okay. Thank you for that. That's good, at least that's something.
So...
We did unplug those lights. I mean, I don't think there's, I don't, I don't know, I would imagine it's their electricity, it doesn't really matter. But the point is, I think they had them on there. So for evening, people walking across in the evening, there'd be some light there, so I can appreciate that, but...
It was plugged in on the cove side?
It was. So I don't know if they could plug it back in and do their operation, I'm not sure. But there was, there was some damage that is, sounds like, at least it's temporary fix on.
So that, it sounds like those should be replaced. Jerry, do we know who's those are?
It's not, but the lights?
Yeah.
You know, that's weird stuff.
Yeah. That's from Rick? That's his stuff? Can you let him know that those could need to be replaced and that at a certain point in time, we're going to remove them and throw them away?
One second, eight, does that interest, I think, in there?
By next meeting, it's, we're a month away. So it's deep. Somebody needs to give a thumbs up, they're going to replace them. And that'll give them some time. And then, does that sound good? Let them know that we're gonna, we're gonna pitch them unless he replaces them, because there was some damage.
I think that's fair, that gets through some of the PTC.
And then we're, next on the agenda is the, our policy of raising the lower of the dam, so we're going to work our way through that. This next one is kind of interesting. The access door.
I thought it was secured.
It's, I think there's a, let's just say there's a piece of wood, and there's a nail stuck in it, and that's how you can take the, you know, out and flip the switch, flip the, or the key piece down, walk in. So what he was saying is it's not secure to go into that area from where the cove seating area is, there's like a smaller, a little storage area in there before you actually went out the door. So he was saying that area in between seating area, you can do it, it's not secure. And then you go to that other, some area before they actually, you know. He didn't think anything should be stored in there. He just felt that that should be kept, maintained. But I'm not sure of the arrangements with the cove, they keep on clouds and they keep it over, they don't actually change it. It's accessible to their staff, but it's not locked or secured. You can understand from a safety, security standpoint, that area isn't secure, then people could be in there, going to them, getting used to it. I'm just saying that that was the concern.
But isn't there another door before we get into the control room?
There is a metal door that is to the control room.
And that's locked, right, Jerry? No? Yeah. So what's the difference if they get into that storage area? Isn't that what you're saying?
It's just that it's not viewable, you know, it's not viewable, so that you don't know what's happening.
Not necessarily for the safety of the dam, just for something...
Or potentially if somebody's trying to get into the dam doors, I don't know. I know.
Is that considered part of the dam or is that part of the cove?
Well, it's definitely shared, so.
That's a good question. Well, I'll do a little research. I think what I'll have to do is look at the footprint.
Is that Bay Four or no?
Yeah, is it part of Bay Four or not is the question, you know, where the, you know what I'm saying, the footprint?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Because their easement is pretty clear about Bay Four.
It's theirs.
Yeah. Where they have access to it in perpetuity. I don't know if that's...
So you're reading from the, can you read that?
Uh, well, it's on page three of this, the third page in, in the packet for today. It just talks, it goes through about the wineries quickly indeed and the easement, unobstructed access to Bay Four and the operation of the control room in Bay Four. I just didn't know if that was part of Bay Four or not.
Yeah, it says it's non-exclusive, so if that's the case, we would not have ability to lock it, even though others would be using it.
I don't think he realized, to Jerry's defense, I don't think he realized that he had not read the legal...
Sure.
Sure, yeah.
Risk management?
Yep. And I don't know if, I don't know if it is part of Bay Four, but I, I think it might be.
Yeah, I'm quite sure it is. And it's interesting that, that section that we're looking at, I know he's concerned about the door into the storage area, but he, he goes on and talks about the door going into the control room. Consider installing an electronic card reader access that allows the county to regulate who has access to the room and record when the door is opened and by whom.
Pretty high-tech.
Well, that's what we have in this building, right?
Yeah.
Regarding that door, the door he's talking about, they used to padlock it.
Jerry, can you come up and sit up at the table, please? That way, we, the recording will grab what you're saying.
For the wooden door as it passed by the dam, over the years, it used to be padlocked, small, padlocked. Then that went away for, for, for whatever, someone did for the back, so they had a vault through the, and that's where it's at right now. So they go back to padlock it, which you have just a key that I would have, that we have to get through the gate. You know, we put out the steps to get out to the deck. And we talked to you, you know, get that padlocked. That would look like anybody having access to the initial.
And it was that way at one time?
If we can do it, why not? Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like a good step.
As long as it was done before, right? So there...
They had a lock out before, before it was...
Let's get back to it.
Yeah, maybe...
That would be one way to look at it, from the card access.
Why don't, when you're talking to Rick about the lights he's going to replace, why don't we do the lock, go back to lock? And I don't know, I'm not sure if there's a repair, professional repair that could be done to those lights. I don't, I don't know.
Probably a $20 string of lights to get it...
They're so, they're so cheap.
Same thing with the local facility. They have all those hanging bolts and...
For the road light, you know, type thing, something that's not great for views, but...
All right, well, you know, the, my concern with installing a system like that at the dam would be the system would fall. I mean, here we are, we need to get into the dam room, and the system falls. My card won't open it. So I'll call Leanna, you know, and, you know, I mean, it's, granted, it's a key lock, but, you know, we can be as secure as we possibly can be with a key lock system, which we are now. I feel pretty good about our security, having a key in the hands of Jerry, and he probably has a copy down there that Dwayne can get his hand on. So we have, so we have two keys. I don't know, I feel pretty secure. I don't see the need to try for a card system myself, I...
Keys, the keys hardly ever fail, the electronic boxes do. You go to a hotel room and they work most of the time. Most of the time is not ideal.
And that was what I thought. Especially in an environment like that, that's wet and it's mist and, you know, weather.
Things do, they can, or sort of top of that, wouldn't walk through, so.
Well, there, yeah, but we're talking about that, the door into the room.
Does, he also says record when it was opened and by whom. Is that a separate item then? Is he asking for a log of some sort then? Could be maintained.
Well, it's, you know, it's like, you know, if something goes on in this building, you know, maybe we have four chairs missing, you know? So security goes back through and sees who, who was in the building during the timeframe when the chairs were lifted. And they can tabulate all the people and quiz them and, you know, and there are cameras, you know, and it's all part of the overall security system.
The only other side of it is that, is since Jerry is really the only one that has the key, all that liability lays on him. Okay.
Is there, is there a log in there, Jerry, that you write down when you're in to do standard maintenance?
Is there a log?
Like a log, just a rip, paper that just, like, when you were in, like, this day checked, something?
That's what I do, or when I'm down there, I write down the levels, you know, I have to walk down there.
Okay, so it's in the book, that you write down the numbers, the date, time, when you're checking it and all that?
So anyway, yeah, signage there, again, I have no problem with that signage. There again, the legality of, of the cove having access to Bay Four, I think, and Terry didn't know that, you know, storage of materials there, you know, I, could that be construed as access to Bay Four? Probably, I don't know. So anyway, Deb and I'll kind of hash these things out. We'll either do a Deb and me and Terrence call, or we'll do a Zoom with Terrence at the next meeting, try to get some closure on some of the comments that he made.
So we are going to put a sign up on the door? That's a simple...
Right now, we could, you can decide, I think, the language for signage. We have signage at the, probably both ends of the walkway and a sign on the door.
Authorized personnel only, I think, isn't that what they suggested?
It seems like that would cover the base. Authorized personnel only.
If we put licensee, invitee, easy.
Yeah. On, probably need one on...
Both sides.
Probably on both sides, so one on each side. So there's two signs that say that?
Would you like to see quotes and size, or do you just want Jerry to go ahead and take care of it?
Yeah, I...
Standard, don't you think?
Let Jerry pick the size that makes the most sense. I mean, he's going to be the one that's going to be fixing it onto something, so...
It has to fit on the, on the door somewhere.
And then the sign that goes on the door of the, of the control room...
You said you had that already? Good.
Okay. Okay.
That one's way to the top view regarding signage for the walkway.
Correct. Okay.
So I entertain a motion with regard to signage. I'll move, we place the signage as... recommended.
At each end?
At each end of the dam and on the door to the control.
Court, control room door.
Second.
Second.
We have support. Discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have signs. Excellent. All right. So, brings us to item three. There's A, dam adjustment procedures, and B, process to address concerns. Jerry and I met yesterday and we chatted for a bit to try to, in my mind, just to kind of, okay, where do, where do we go with this one? And I think it's an excellent discussion that we're going to have. It'll help put on paper what Jerry does and the processes, and it'll help Dwayne, because he's going to step in when Jerry takes his two months vacation and flies around the world.
Really?
And whoever replaces Dwayne when Dwayne's ready to retire. So I think it's a good thing to do. We're going to kind of get some stuff down that Jerry's been doing forever and, and it was, it was good for me here at two. And just as a, kind of a guideline, and we can, you can trash this if you want, but I thought there might be three categories, maybe, maybe, let's hold it maybe to three categories. Uh, there's one category that I'm going to call independent. So, there's a multitude of things that have, has to be done with the dam on a day-to-day, year-to-year basis that would be independently done by the dam control person. Category two, the dam control person would call maybe the chair of the dam authority, or call someone else that we could, you know, assign to talk to before doing whatever, a major, a more major change. And it would be all in the realm of normal activity, but the second category would be a more significant change to what's going on at the dam. Not abnormal at all, but it's, okay, we just had a 10-inch rain in the south end. Here's what I think we need to do, kind of thing. And then, um, the third category would be something really different. You know, it would be something that would require, well, we better take this to the dam authority meeting. You know, I mean, this is a consideration that doesn't fall into either the independent or the normal large movements. This is something that's different, and we should take this to the dam authority for a decision. And then those are my kind of three categories that Jerry and I kind of talked about a little bit. And I just thought maybe that'd be a place to start. Should we make categories? Are those categories, do those sound reasonable?
Yes.
I think, I think it does, but I think we sort of need to define where those categories stop and start. I mean, the normal day-to-day operation, Jerry, just takes care of it, you know, looks at the levels and adjusts as appropriate. Where you might get something that there has to be a bigger, more significant change is maybe where water levels, either above or below court order allow, you know, allowable elevations. In that case, more drastic, you know, operation may have to be undertaken. And I think the, the third, but it's still not unusual. I mean, we get runoff, we get rainfalls. It happens that it can go up, or we get droughts and it can go down. And then maybe the last category is anything, I don't know if we want to set it like a metric, if it's more than, you know, one or two inches or something outside of the court order elevations, then, you know, that would be an abnormal situation that would require more drastic operations and changes. Yeah, the, Jerry?
Deb and I talked to, and she.
Can you come up?
It wouldn't be so bad.
There's nothing being recorded there, I don't think. Is there, is there?
Deb and I talked some time ago and she, she suggested that, you know, in an event like you're talking about, that'd be the time, especially to help the guys come after me. Okay, we're getting a lot of rain, a lot of rain, a lot of rain. Okay, I want a lot of water, but nobody knows until I'm bored. And liability and whatnot, which I understand, you know, the administrator, Deb knows, and then, you know, one of you folks know that that's what's going on, so we're all on the same page. The amount is not going to be extreme at one time, you know, you have to start letting more, but you're going to get below the court order, not the court mark, and you're going to have to. But then you monitor, Steve and I talked, we, and Phil and I wanted to say the same thing today. We would monitor by a half a day or that day, you know, twice a day, monitor what's going on because anyone slowed up as maybe the weather changes, they receive, it's going down the way they want to. From the southwest, it's still the course, it's either from the north, and it's going to take a longer. But in general, that way, you folks and administrator are on the same page, and we, you know what's going on. Kevin mentioned that too. That would be a, I agree with that. At least it would be better than sometimes it would be great.
Yeah, I feel like, you know, we're an authority now. That sounds pretty impressive. I feel this is where we need to step in, absolutely, is to support Jerry and his decision-making. And I'm not really even sure if Deb needs to be involved in it, you know what I mean? I mean, I think she should be consulted, but I think that's our role that we've signed up to, is to be more proactive, right?
A question, how often do you go below the, the court order in anticipation of extreme weather?
Right now, it's not been, this past year's not been, past year and that too, it's been, you know, pretty quiet. So I've been fortunate to how often, just depending on where we're at with the level, which is going to, because the level being at the height, we don't have a cushion. If we need the drought, we don't have a cushion. Okay, so if we get a rain event today, okay, I go down there, it's already going to be above the 92 mark. I mean, that's a given, but then I have to let water. So it's just a matter of monitoring that and anticipation is, you know, incredible. And it's just a matter of being there, being ready. And if it is happening, I'm going to start letting water, but.
Is it a burden to send an email to the members of the dam authority that this is what you're planning to do, or this is what you have done? So if we get a call?
I was just going to say, I think it makes point back to, to Steve's comment that if we had three different levels, something that like level one, independent operation, what is, what is maintenance authorized to do on an ongoing maintenance, repair, tracking, reporting basis? And then I think it'd be helpful if there was a reporting event, like, if there's a major adjustment or something, I think that would be a reporting event, that an email would go out to the, at least the chairman of the board and then that, of the authority, and then that way it would be up to chairman to distribute that as, if she felt necessary, perhaps. Then another third one, perhaps being then a dam, a dam authority directive. So if there is some maintenance expense above a certain level, or if there is some, you know, more specific event or discussions have to take place with the, I think the authority would want to be advised of that, perhaps. So those could just be some basic examples, but I like that concept of a tiered approach. It just provides a little bit more direction, a little bit more, I think, support for the staff, which I think is risk management's and final line main concern. I want to make sure that our staff is protected, that there are clear guidelines, so that there's no ambiguity in terms of actions taken that would in any way complicate. We have so many repairians that are all watching this, I just don't want that to be a legacy for anyone and corporate accounting. So that is truly, I think, the intent, hopefully to help us with guidelines that would be protective of everyone.
I was going to add to Rick's question. If, let's just say we have a four-inch rain, or a five-inch rain, and it comes in 12 hours or less. So in essence, our lake is four or five inches up. Way over court order. Your question to Jerry, how often do you go below the court order? The only way to get water out of the system is to open the dam. And as soon as you open the dam, whatever degree you need to as the operator, and Jerry has a good feel. Or, you know, we talked, you know, if it's just a normal rain event, he opens it a bit. He goes to manual, opens it up a bit, sets it, and goes away and comes back in 24 hours and sees if we're coming down to where it needs to be. Now, that's just a normal rain event. If it's a big one, where he has to open it more, he checks twice a day to see where we are, and the check is at the narrows. Because once you open the dam up, that level drops, because you have to pull water out of the system. So, you know, that's a good reason to have the check at the narrows. You know, where is the lake level actually going on in the lake? You know, if you can see that it's coming down there, then that lets you know you can choke back up at the dam and go back to equilibrium and get to the court order. The whole objective at that point is to dump water out of the system. Right now, Jerry explained that the downstream people need to be taken into consideration to a certain degree, and there are boats tied up, and that whole fishtown is there. Now, fishtown got a redo. All of, all of fishtown came up with new pilings. So it takes a huge amount of pressure off the dam operator because dumping a large amount of water was problematic with the fishtown pilings and the structures erosion-wise. Plus, the boats were secured at a lower level, and they were more affected. So now, everything's up, boats are secured further up, less chance of erosion downstream, so dumping excess water, a large amount of excess water, is a lot easier on the folks downstream now. So that gives the dam operator a little more leeway on that end. On the upstream end, you've got the river, you know, and the level of the river, and of course, all the repairians there, but the marina needs a certain amount of water at the marina to be able to move the boats around. And if you're dumping a large amount of water, you know, the river goes down, and then they have a hard time moving their boats around. So, it all kinds of goes in an ebb and flow. You've got the early season where we're bringing the water up for summer level, and you've got all the activity of that timeframe, and it quadruples or more so during the summer season. You know, you've got the river people and the downstream people, and then the fall season, that goes away, and it's a little more flexibility. So the shoulders, you've got more flexibility with doing the water thing, and then, of course, you go to winter level. This year, with people watching so closely and thinking that we should be able to get to summer level in one day, because that's what the court order says. You know, so.
You got to make a rain. You have to make a rain.
Judge said it, so we can do it, right? But on a very dry year like this year was, if you go back in the charts and take a look at how long it took to get to summer level, that's kind of an indicator for a dry year. Now, we've had so many wet years, Jerry, you're cautious then with people thinking that we can do it in a day. You really didn't do a lot of anticipatory, let's start creeping the level up from winter level to summer level before the day of the summer level. A real typical dam operator, and what we've done over the 20 years, is Jerry got to a point, he said, well, I'm going to just bring it up a little bit, because we want to be at summer level somewhere near the 14th. And he would kind of creep it up. If the ice went away, he'd creep it up a little bit, just a little, coming off of winter. You know, so we're not at court order anymore. We're off the court order, but we're heading toward summer level. So there's a timeframe where you're not in court order. Because you can't be. You physically can't get there in a day. So you do it as quickly as you can and commonsensical as you can. And if it's a dry year, or even if it is a dry year, the ice goes away, let's creep up a little bit, like a week before, two weeks before, we're starting to creep up. So we get to summer level somewhere near the court order, the summer level date. So that's kind of what we do as dam operators. We didn't do it this year. We had people really adamantly, you know, you do it in one day, you can't give it. So you take a look at the charts, and I don't know, I think it took two weeks, two and a half weeks to get to the summer level, and screaming and yelling the hallway. Why aren't we, close off the dam entirely?
But that does speak to a concern I have, and that's sharing this information with the public, not just the repairians, but anyone in Lelandale County that comes to us and says, what's going on? I think we can do a better job of, of sharing the difficult position that Jerry is in, and how good a job he does do supporting that. So I just think we need to look at ways how we can get this information off of this authority and into the community, so that we have everybody kind of on the same page. And the Lake, Lake, Lelandale Lake Association is obvious, first place to start. I've been reading their newsletters for, I don't know, a long time, and I've never seen anything really in there that addresses this. So I think that would be an excellent, excellent place to start, just trying to get the word out there that this authority is in control, and we are establishing policy to help make this transition. Do you guys agree, or, I mean, to me, education is.
Making comment? Steve and I read this a number of years ago. We all know it was 2012, and 2015, the issue out back at, number. We, March 2nd, we got 24 inches of snow by March 18th. We had 85-degree weather. And everything was dry. Got it all charted, I've got it all. And we had to raise the lake because there was no runner, everything was dry, it was bald dry, it was just an event. And we, because it was like, yeah, March. We had nothing, and it was dry, nothing in the hills after this event. And we were, the ice was gone in the lake. So we had a good month before to start raising, but if we didn't start raising it sooner, we weren't going to have water even by tomorrow day. And so then people started raising, issue with where you raise it before April 15th. Now, before you're at court order, but we're trying to anticipate. So, we'll run into that again. Do, you would wait till the April 15th, like, you try to pump it up, but then people don't wait it, but you can't bring it up from winter level until April 15th or on, or whatever our interpretation is. And there's times, and that one time, we needed to raise it, otherwise we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have been even halfway to summer level by the morning day weekend, which is a good target when people are up. So if I or the county decides to raise that level sooner than all the ice is gone and the weather is, that's kind of a gray area. the weather is, that's kind of a gray area legality-wise, is it not? I don't know. You know, because you're talking about, so I don't know, I know what to do, but...
So, so this year was a prime example, because Jerry, I've talked, I mean, what do we do? We've got all this attention on us. So we didn't do the anticipatory bring up, we waited to the day, and then we brought the lake up. So from that day until we were at summer level, we were out of compliance. So in essence, we chose to be out of compliance after the 14th instead of before the 14th. And the happy medium is to start bringing it up, and there is the 14th, we're not there, and then, and then, and then we're there. So there's a, there's a chunk of time that we're going to be out of compliance, no matter what. If it's a dry year, it's two weeks. If it's a wet year, it's one week.
I was just saying, it makes perfect sense to what Kamala was saying from the standpoint of, we have the perfect relationship with the lake authority, so, Lake Association. So a week before, or two weeks before, you know, a notification in the newsletter, or whatever that month is saying, you know, just FYI, you know, over the next two weeks, we will be raising the dam to get to the spring dam level. You'll see slight adjustments. I mean, I think that's just so easily addressed, and would be a positive communication opportunity rather than, you know...
So it's a, it could be like a billboard.
Yeah, because this year, it actually, it's in that newsletter, it said, go out and watch, because it's gonna happen. They made it seem like it was an event you were gonna, you were gonna witness. That's how it was, that's how I interpreted...
That would be a great, that would be a wonderful opportunity.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the enterprise to contact the enterprise as well.
Oh, totally.
Let them know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah. Because it is, it is part of our climate change, you know, and it's gonna be effective, it's gonna make whoever follows Jerry even more difficult if we try to figure out what's gonna happen. So opportunity to encourage participation from our residents.
We have a meeting on Monday for the Finance Committee of the Lake Association. I'll mention it to them and ask the question, do they understand that we have to be out of compliance before or after April 15th?
It takes a certain amount of time to get from here to there.
Yeah, you can't.
In that timeframe, you're out of compliance.
It's gonna happen.
Ask them about communicating through their newsletter, that is a really good vehicle for us.
I do have to apologize, I have another...
I think we all do. I think...
Was there any other questions?
So, just real quick, quantify how, don't we actually have to quantify what those three categories are?
Yeah, and I think that's a good topic for next meeting. We're an hour and 15 in.
Okay, okay.
And I know, I know you're leaving, and I've got an interview that's going on for Kylan's position right now.
Oh, dear.
That I was gonna try to get to, but that, that's okay. I'm just saying...
I just think we need to actually quantify when it's a mandate, when it's mandatory that he connects with us, or somebody.
Exactly, we need to put numbers on this.
Yeah, so is that gonna happen as a whole authority, or is that a work group, a smaller group, maybe coming up with recommendations to bring to this larger body, or...
Well, I'm, I did sit with Jerry one time, I'm willing to sit with Jerry another time. We could do one other person with me and not have a quorum, so, you know...
I'm just, I'm kind of anxious to get it started. I hate to wait another full month until we meet as a group to get some numbers, you know, I think, in the meantime...
Honestly, we need...
I need to assist as any way I can in terms of...
So we could, you and Jerry and me and Kamala meet?
Sure, anything, just to...
And then hammer out where, we do what?
Start to put some numbers in, probably by that, feed it to you guys before the meeting in September, and then...
So we can actually get a...
So you can actually maybe make some.
Sound good?
I mean, I don't mean to push it, but I just think...
No, you, somebody needs to push it. I'm a Norwegian, it won't ever happen.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll meet with Deb and Kamala and Jerry, and we'll, Kami, hammer this out.
Sounds great.
Okay. All right, now, good discussion. We did a sensor calibration. We can push walkway quite obviously, because we're not there yet to next meeting, I think. Roof leak, same, we can push that to next month. Conduit computer box leak, I'll just say it real quick, there's a leak that's coming into our control box with the computer.
Yourself, sure.
And Jerry has it shunted now, so it drips not in the box, and he's in contact with the person that can inject the conduit. So he's in the process of finding the conduit and getting the injection done, so that can stop.
He did injections into our tunnel, using this joint, so this guy knows where it is.
That's his thing, so that's in motion. Computer is repaired, adjustment parameters, Jerry's gonna ping on the guy. As it is right now, the only adjustment is a whole inch, and we only have two inches to play with. So we'd like to have quarter inches, I think, just to, you know, and that whole, where do we hold it kind of thing is our, so if we have more adjustments in there, that goes automatically. We can set it at automatic at a quarter inch level versus now it's a one inch level, and it's automatic right now. So anyway, that's in motion. And the current lake levels, we can push that to next month too, I think. And what we're running right now is what we said we were gonna run.
Looks perfect.
And, and whether or not we hold with that or tweak it is up to us.
I would just like, we did, I think at the end of the packet, are the concerns that Commissioner Rexro have been, have been receiving from the South End? Did we want to discuss that, or they were included?
We did get the letter, and the South Enders are seeing more water, and my comment to the county board of commissioners was, you know, we're carrying more water, decided to carry two more inches of water in the system in the middle of the minus-two inches window, you know, that, at the dam, it's here, and at the Narrows, it's here, we're kind of right in the middle of that two-inch window. The adjustment will mean that everyone will be seeing a somewhat higher level of water at their dock and beach. So, and the South Enders are saying that, you know, and the South End is, out of those beaches, you know, it's a real shallow reach, so if you come up an inch, or an inch and a half, or two, you know, you're talking three feet on the beach, so...
But again, education, even some of the commissioners were questioning Steve and saying, well, what does one inch mean? And, you know, it's so complex, and just to try to not answer their concerns by not providing information on a constant basis, you know, I just think it's a huge job.
Yeah, that's almost like a billboard. We can, you know, Jerry, Jerry can tell me, and I can just email to the billboard, and it goes up. It's, it's a system, all you need to do is bump it and say, we're doing this.
We're doing our best.
We're doing this.
No one else's heard complaints or anything? You're on the South End, aren't you?
Yeah, Ken Blackstone mentioned that the water was slightly higher. He did not complain. He's the property owner at the gauge location. And I hear from Mike at M&amp;E on Parker Road, he raised his house, that's behind us. So he wants the river to be dredged and change the flow, the responsiveness of emptying the South Lake, but no significant complaints.
Good.
Doug Rexro asked me at the meeting, he said, well, what about, you know, doing a flow study? And I, I told him that this body went to the county board early on, you know, it's 15 years ago, and let's do a flow study, and we went out to bids, and we chose God's Exhibit for 15 grand, and we do a flow study. During the executive, everybody voted for it. Time had hit the next week, maybe I voted down. Because somebody thought that, oh, if we dredge, historically, the company's put up half, and the repairers put up half. And that sunk the ship right there, no flow study. Which, you know, whether or not we do anything with a flow study, it'd be kind of nice to know how the, you know, how the different flow rates are, you know, we get water in South End, you know, what's the flow rate? And the Narrows were dredged 45 years ago, almost 50 years ago. That was with the dam patch, and it was a dredge, and that was about a million dollars. And the county paid half, the repairers paid half. But the Narrows did get dredged at that time. Brown and Root did the study, and they recommended it, and so we did it. So we were just thinking, well, let's do another study and see where we are, and maybe we entertain that topic as we move forward for this body to think about, should we do a flow study? I mean, that's, we, from flow study, we went to sensors. Now we're getting our sensors tuned up, and we'll have some information with that, quite a bit, quite a bit of that.
But I think the only way to make everyone that's unhappy on South Lake happy is to make people that are on the river unhappy, which is what we were dealing with when we first started, which is why things changed. So that's, how do you find that balance is, that's the tricky part.
Yeah, we've only got two inches to work with.
Right.
And that's all we're allowed to work with. And in order to anticipate you the dry periods and rainfall periods, you can't keep it either upper limit or the bottom limit, because then you can't accommodate those changes in weather conditions. So you're pretty much stuck, keeping it about an inch below, you know, in the middle of that two-inch segment. And then it'll vary a little bit based on weather, you know, whether it's drought or wet. But that's the level we, I mean, realistically, that's how it has to operate. And everybody's got to look, that's the way it's gonna be.
That's what education is about, though. That's what I'm saying, we just have to educate people as to the watershed, yeah.
Yes, outside of that, the only thing you could look at is how, how old is the court order, and unless someone wanted to go back and challenge that.
People are talking about that.
Because that's the only other way it would get changed.
Once it's open, it can go anywhere, but it takes more than half the repairers signing a document for the repairers to bring it. Maybe the county board could bring it on their own as far as readdressing the court order, but, you know, Jerry's always told me from day one, you know, this is, you know, almost 40 years ago. How's it going, Jared? Well, I had five tell me it was too high, and five tell me it was too low, so I think I'm all right. So, you know, I, I have a lot of confidence in the level that the court order is at myself. I think it's a very, very, and just the fact that, you know, we're experiencing some days and some nays. River folks have been tough, because when there's, when there are big events, you know, you gotta dump water and the river goes down. So, you know, there again, is, is the flow study gonna tell us, you know, if you dredge here and dredge there, what does it give you? And it'll tell you, you're gonna gain X amount of time. So you're gonna drop a million or two million, could gain half hour.
Yeah.
You know, or whatever it is, I don't know. And that's, they ran into that up in Antrim. They spent, they got a good fund, I think the company spent $100,000 in a fund, it was $250,000 to do a flow study, but it's, you know, it's ALK, it's intermediate, it's Skegum Rock, and it's dripping all those different lakes, so it's a big thing. And they got all done, you could dredge here, cost a million dollars. What would it save? Three hours.
If anybody wants to take a look at the law regarding setting elevation and change, it's MCL 327, .30707, and that gives you all the details of what's required in terms of having all these different items that the judge or the courts use to make that determination in terms of lake level. People can challenge it, the county board could decide to go back, but given the fact that they've been through all this and considered all those points originally, I think it's gonna be a, it would be a difficult argument to make that it should be different now than it was.
Especially on this lake. We've got good flow. We've got, right now, it's interesting, if you go there today, there's not a whole lot of water going over. It's on auto and it's set, you know, and I was declaring that the drought is broken, but, but there's not a lot of water going over.
There isn't. I think we're supposed to get a half inch tonight, maybe?
Oh, really?
Off the rain hard.
Tonight, though?
Tonight.
Today?
I think tonight, yeah.
Do you sleep well on those nights, Jerry?
It's so hard to predict, because back when we had that hot stretch in July, I was looking at the evaporative pan readings out of Traverse City, and we lost five inches of water out of, equivalent of five inches of water out of the lake during the weak period. So you can lose a lot of water really fast when it's hot and dry.
Add some wind to it.
That really ramps it up.
Yep. Well, great discussions, I appreciate it, and I've got a little to-do list, and we'll get it done. I would entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Adjourn. Thanks, Jer. Thanks for what you do, buddy.
And thanks for, thanks for taking the phone.